Good evening, everyone. The time is six thirty-two. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mayor Proton Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please? Proton Ferguson, are you there?
My volume is down.
You got it. You have the floor.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Dear Lord, we just thank you for another opportunity to say thank you for keeping us another day, and we thank you, Lord Jesus, for your faithfulness that is great towards us. And Father, we invite you into your presence into this meeting tonight. We ask that you would bless us with your peace and your wisdom and your guidance. And Father God, we just ask you to meet all the needs of the families there that are experiencing the governmental shutdown, Father God, and that we ask that they lack for nothing and all needs will be met. In Jesus's name we pray, amen and amen.
I will do the roll call. Give me one second as Council Clerk is having some issues with her computer. All right. Councilwoman Cross?
Present.
Councilman Hairston?
Here.
Councilman Harry?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Here.
And Mayor Curtis is here. We have a quorum. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm on.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Here, none by unanimous consent, this, the agenda is hereby adopted. There's only one item on the agenda for the special regular work session, and that is Resolution Zero Nine Dash Twenty Twenty Six, A Resolution Authorizing Event Management and Decor Services for the City of Glenardens Holiday Party. Give me one second as I pull it up.
Point of order, Mayor, this is a special regular meeting.
Special, what did I say?
Work session.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Special regular meeting. The work session is at seven. Thank you, Councilman. All right, I'll bring it up and I'll read it for everyone. Mr. Gray, you said you made me the host, but I am not the host. Could you please allow me to share my screen?
You should have it now.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Resolution R Zero Nine Twenty Twenty Six, sponsor is Mayor Proton Angela Ferguson. The public hearing was held, the date of introduction was on October twenty-eighth. The public hearing was October twenty-eighth and it's being read today, November third, at this special meeting. A resolution authorizing event management and decor services for the City of Glenardens Holiday Party, whereas the City of Glenardens promoting more community fellowship and belonging for its residents, and whereas the city would like to host a special event for its residents, and whereas the city council would like to celebrate the December holiday season by hosting its annual holiday party, to bring the community together for an evening of celebration, and whereas the city council would like to have event planning, decor, and date of event management of the annual holiday party to ensure all residents and their guests are entertained, and whereas the funds have been allocated in the twenty-twenty-six fiscal budget for special events. Now therefore be resolved by the City of Glenardens sitting in regular session that this third day of November twenty-twenty-five, that Trios Event Planning will provide event planning, management, and decor per attached contract. Number two, the cost of the services will not exceed twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Number three, the funds will come from budget line item ten dot thirty dot ten dot eight six four seven, and number four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
I don't know.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, just one point.
Yes.
This is just for decoration or is this including food and all?
It does matter for the food. Decoration, games, some of the plates and the plates, the flatware, cups. So multi, it's just not the decoration. But it's not the food.
Was that it? Councilwoman Cross?
No, just a, just a question. Did we get another vote or so on this? Twelve thousand seems a little high for decoration. I know we've been getting more extravagant each year. Just wondering.
It's the same vendor. It did go up slightly because of prices, but it is the same vendor that's been used for the last three years.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. What's the difference, madam?
The difference in what? The cost?
Yes, madam.
Uh, I think it's twelve hundred dollars for that statement.
A twelve hundred dollar increase from last year, madam?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
Councilman Williams?
Some housekeeping things. The resolution reads fitting in regular session on this day, and it shouldn't be regular session, it would be special session.
Okay.
If this is just for the decorations, where's the one for the food? Did we already do that?
I do not believe we've done it.
It's on, it should be on the agenda for the work session at seven o'clock.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I'll just go through a roll call for the votes. Or before I do that, were there any other comments? Okay, here and none? Councilwoman Cross?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Yes.
And Curtis is yes, this resolution passes, the amended resolution passes. All right. With that, that was all that was on the agenda for this special regular session. I do believe, Mr. Gray, correct me if I'm wrong, that, or is this, it's the council clerk in? Council clerk, are you?
Yes, I'm here.
Is there, is there another link for the work session?
No, it's the same, it's the same link.
Okay. Well. With that, the time is six forty-four. This meeting is now adjourned, and we will have our next meeting, which is our regularly scheduled work session today at about fifteen minutes at seven P.M. But the special regular meeting is hereby adjourned. Time is six forty-five. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. The time is seven P.M. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mayor Proton Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Good evening. Father God, we just ask that you would grace us with your presence yet again, and we thank you for your blessings as we continue the meeting to do the business of the city. Father God, we ask that you will bless all the citizens of Glenardens, employees of Glenardens, all who is affiliated with us, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Mr. Gray, if it is not recording, could you please record? And also please make me the co-host. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Cross? Councilman Hairston? Okay, he's coming back in. Councilman Hairston? Councilman Harry?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones? Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, what, I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Cross?
Here.
Okay. Councilman Hairston?
Here.
Okay. Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Here.
And Mayor Cross. I'm sorry, Mayor Curtis.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there a motion to adopt the agenda for the work session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Cross, I mean Mayor. Mayor Curtis.
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I was talking to a constituent, but anyway, I would like to add something to the agenda for topics of discussion.
Okay.
And the topic will be Johnson Avenue, Fisk Avenue.
Johnson Avenue, Fisk Avenue, one second. Is that all, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Cross?
I would like to add a topic to discussion. The topic of discussion will be the American Legion Auxiliary request to honor our seniors who have been supporting the auxiliary for a number of years and utilizing the Go Room and a gratis status. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hey. Any opposition to accepting the amended agenda? Here and none. By unanimous consent, the amended, the amended agenda is hereby adopted. Okay, first on the agenda are the minutes for October the sixth work session and October the twentieth regular session. Were any questions or comments as it relates to those minutes? They'll be voted on at the regular session in two weeks. Moving on to legislation. First is ordinance zero four dash twenty twenty-six, An Emergency Ordinance to Amend the City of Glenardens Budget for FY twenty-six to Fund Federal Workforce Relief Program. I'll bring that up for everyone. Were there any comments or questions related to this legislation? Next was?
Um, Miss Mayor, just one thing on that piece of legislation. If we can get the treasure to give us an account number for the program, because I didn't have a count, I didn't have a G L. number, so he needed to stick that in there. It's on page two, line fifty-eight.
Page two fifty-eight. Okay, is Mr. Stewart on? I don't see him, but if Mr. Simpson or Mr. or Council Clerk, could you make a note to retrieve a line item from the treasure, please?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Resolution Zero Eight Dash Twenty Twenty Six, A Resolution to Establish a Federal Worker's Relief Program. Just one second. All right, are there any questions or comments related to this resolution? Yes. All right, Councilman Williams, I heard you first. I will bring it up since we have questions. Second, as I share my screen. Okay, Councilman Williams? Councilman Williams?
Okay, I apologize. I said I support it as a loan, not just a grant. Um. If they get back pay like they usually do, then that should be returned, the money should be returned back to the city. If they don't get back pay, then it was turned into a grant. That's how I would support this legislation.
Uh, for both portions? So there is the, the grant, and then there's the food portion of it. So you're saying for, for both?
For, yes, yeah, this is to be given relief, but if they get back pay, if they get their back pay, then it should be a loan in this council person's opinion.
So. And I don't want to step on Councilman Herring's or Councilman Hairston's toes. So the, the rationale, at least for the food program, is that um, you know, they will need money now to I see what you're saying. They'll still need money now to eat.
Right.
And, and yeah, no, I understand. I understand what you're saying. It's registering what you're saying. Uh, but for the, for the, um, the other side of this is those are for terminated employees. So for the, the actual grant relief, um, that's for terminated employees, so they wouldn't get back pay. Only one portion of this is for furlough. The food program is for furlough uh, members. The actual relief grant is where people have been terminated. Did I represent that correctly, Councilman Harry? And Miss Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Okay. Was that all, Councilwoman Williams?
That's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Cross?
Thank you. My, my question is what are we going to do in regards to double allotments of payments? For I know that Governor Moore has taken a lot of strategic moves to put millions of dollars towards ensuring relief as well as the county. What we don't want to do is to create an advantage where there have been others who have been laid off in our city who we have not taken care of, and just because they don't have federal worker in front of their names. I don't want us to look at money, which is literally paid in by all members of the society to not be adequately available to others, and what I understood from our previous meeting, that Councilman Hairston and Councilman Herring was going to extend their five hundred dollar legislation to afford. And this is a one-time, as I understand it, not a consistency. And then the other piece is relative to the payback option. I agree with Councilman Williams on that point, because for those that shall get back pay, the city again is moving in a direction of supporting many projects right now, which we don't have resources at this point to adequately support, and has already been stated that we have used some of our reserve to even offset this budget for FY twenty-six. So I just want us to be good stewards, not only of the taxpayers' money, but all taxpayers' money when it comes down to these budget things. And I do agree with Councilman Williams on that point, so thank you for adequately stating that, Councilman Williams, but otherwise, one-time payment, and how will we decide if others, because the federal government has been shut down, there are contractors and otherwise who haven't been able to get work either, who were also laid off because their job site or their contract was frozen or even mitigated as a result of trying to hold on to government civilians in opposed to those contractors. So I just want us to look at the whole picture, because our budget is for the whole city and not just a select few people. Thank you.
Thank you. This also includes federal contractors. It's not just federal workers. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Curtis. I, once again, the question that I ask at the special, I'm sorry, not the special, but the regular meeting to the city, to the administration, city manager, assistant city manager, have we had any phone calls at all for citizens requesting assistance because they have been affected by this government shutdown and or layoff and or termination?
Good evening, Mayor Curtis?
Yes.
Good evening, Council. I do believe we may have received one or two calls requesting some assistance or if there were any programs for any sort of assistance for food or anything to that nature, and I believe it's only been two calls that I can personally confirm that we've received so far.
Thank you, City Manager Simpson, and you say that those, those requests were for food, specifically for food?
I just know, I heard asking about assistance. I also believe it may have been related to utility assistance or any type of assistance like that, and it's only been, I would say, within the last thirty days specifically that I can recall those calls.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Curtis.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Okay. Here and none, I will stop sharing the resolution and go to the next item on the agenda, which is a resolution to authorize
Point of order, Mayor Curtis?
Yes.
Uh, I just have a question. So, Mr., I'm sorry, Councilman Williams put on the floor a loan, and this is a grant. Are we gonna take a consensus on that, or we're just gonna go with the resolution as it is?
Uh, well, we can take a consensus on it. That is fine. I would just, you know, uh, would say that I respectfully disagree for the food component, at the very least, that it should be alone. The rationale behind it is that, you know, you know, the last thing I want on, one, it, we have to stand up the pro, the project. I think the federal contractors don't get back pay. I think federal workers do get back pay, I believe. I saw some article that it's said that it is law now, even though they're trying to find ways around it. But certainly open to the council. That's why it's a work session, so everybody can bring an opinion on a piece of legislation, and that we can have some type of consensus to move forward. So thank you, Councilwoman Jones. We can take consensus on whether we want to move the what I would believe will be the, well, what Councilman Williams referenced, that if they do get back pay, that they pay it back. So yes, to add that amendment and no to keep it as is. We'll start with Councilwoman Cross?
Yes, to the amendment?
Yes, to the amendment, yep. Councilman Hairston?
No.
Councilman Harry?
And this is to amend the foods, the food part?
Correct.
No.
Councilwoman Jones?
I thought the amendment was not for the food part, but for the, the, the grant.
No, the grant is for terminated employees, so they don't get back pay. So the only, yeah, it's only for the food program.
Oh, okay, no.
Uh, Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
No.
And Mayor Curtis is a no as well, so it will stay as is. Right. Are there any other comments?
I just had one, I have one more, I have one statement now.
Yes, sir. Councilman Williams? Do you want to mute?
When I keep, I'm just making a statement on that vote. When I keep, I'm just making a statement on that vote. So, the council wants to and will vote on, which I will disagree, allowing money for food. And if they get back pay, they don't have to pay it back. That's not being, in my opinion, that's not being good steward of our money. Uh, giving the money now to the system, but when they get their money, it's like giving them gift. No, I, I think that's wrong. So when I hear people in this council are talking about being steward of our money and, and we gotta watch our money this and, and watch our, in some senses, we just give it away, even when people gonna get it back. In other, I, I just don't understand that. So, what, just, I'm gonna have some things to say in the future, you know, comes up tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Councilwoman Cross, is that a hand or is that a old, a new hand or old hand?
That's a new hand.
Okay.
Now, one of the things I would ask us going forward is that we state the resolution number that we're talking about, because it got really jumbled there, 'cause we started talking about two resolutions and then we took a consensus, and we don't know what consensus we was taking. I per- perceive we was taking a consensus on, um, the funding, uh, for federal workers. But you're saying now that we took a consensus on food services for the federal workers, which is very confusing. So I just need clarification on the resolution that you just pulled a consensus on, just so that I'm clear as to what we're actually doing. Because if it's on the back pay issue, I agree with Councilman Williams. If it's on food services, then we need to know exactly what resolution you're talking about. Because twenty-five thousand dollars for, um, food services is a lot of money. And if that's Resolution R zero eight twenty-twenty-six, it doesn't give a component as to how many people or what is the grand total that will be pulled from our city's budget. So in my opinion, this resolution doesn't provide us with what we need. So each eligible participant may receive up to four hundred dollars in total assistance comprising of a direct deposit or grocery store gift card. But then the system itself, the, the write-up itself says the City of Gleno and will provide twenty-five hundred dollars relief grant to each qualified citizen. So it's very confusing in this particular resolution, if we're talking about R zero eight twenty-twenty-six. So are they getting twenty-five hundred dollars a person or are they getting four hundred dollars? It's very confusing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it's one resolution. Um, we're not referencing any other resolution. Uh, I see Councilman Herring has unmuted himself. I'll let him try.
It's, it's a federal workers relief program and it's two things going on here. And that's why there's a noun therefore. It says noun therefore, and then that first noun therefore talks about the grant program, which is twenty-five hundred dollar grant for terminated employees. Then you have another second noun therefore, which starts the, the, uh, food giveaway, the gift card giveaways for food assistance. So it's two programs and we were talking about the gift card section of it. So, um, I mean, I don't think it's that confusing. I mean, yeah. So, we're just trying to cover all our bases, because you have people that are furloughed, you have people that are being terminated throughout the furlough too. So we're trying to, uh, address both issues. So.
And, and I'll also add, I'll also add that, um, you know, you know, Councilman Herring and I did discuss it, um, uh, Councilman Herring and Hairston originally came up with, uh, a program last, um, session or last fiscal year, about a federal assistance program. Uh, and that funding lapsed. And then, uh, Councilwoman, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson and I had a, um, idea of the who component. Uh, and so we, we married the two for one resolution with two different components of it. Um, and what was going to be, uh, two separate things, one three hundred thousand, one two hundred thousand. Um, we did discuss it and just made a cap of three hundred thousand dollars, uh, with two different components of the program. If you, um, get a grant, uh, for the, for the terminated employees, then you're not eligible for the food program. Uh, so you can't double dip on that one. Any other comments?
Yes. Um, re- respectfully, um, council members, mayor, that doesn't say that in this legislation. It doesn't say your cap that you just stated at three hundred thousand in this legislation. And in fact, it doesn't put the provision that if you're qualified for the one first, now therefore be it resolved, which is the twenty-five hundred relief grant, that you do not then subsequently qualify for the second, now therefore be it resolved for the forty, uh, four hundred dollar, uh, total assistance, um, payment for groceries. This legislation, in my opinion, is very troublesome and convoluted. It doesn't provide us, um, what budget line item any of this is coming out of. It doesn't tell us, I mean, are we losing five hundred? Are we utilizing five hundred thousand? Are we utilizing three hundred thousand? And it just doesn't tell us enough. Uh, I un- I respect what you tried to do here to put all this in, but it really just, it is not clear. And it, and it doesn't even tell us, like, what programs now will suffer within the budget, because we need to make a budget modification, because remember, FY twenty-six is done. This is gonna modify the budget of FY twenty-six or what budget line item are we pulling this from? Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, Councilman Herring.
So, um, Councilwoman Cross, uh, the first ordinance, the ordinance zero four twenty-twenty-six is a bu- is a budget amendment ordinance to appropriate three hundred thousand dollars for this, for this program. Um, we just spoke on that and I asked, um, and you're right, it doesn't have an account number. That's why I asked them to, uh, get with the treasurer to get a line item number for, to put in the budget, um, amendment, which caps it at three hundred thousand dollars, 'cause that's all we're gonna have in it. And so that a number has to be put in here and I'll just make sure we get a note to put in here, like a line seven. This should come from a, uh, account, GL account number, whatever he gives us. Um, but, um, it also says that you cannot, um, um, if you're eligible for the food assistance program, you can't be eligible for the grant program. If you're eligible for the grant, you can't be eligible for the food. And, um, and that is actually in this piece of legislation, I think, uh, let's see.
Yes, it's online, um, I'm sorry, interrupt. It is right here.
Yeah, recipients of the federal workers relief program are not eligible for the food assistance program. So it is spelled out in here. Um, but, you know, it is not convoluted. It's just the way it has to be. We have to appropriate the funds by a budget amendment, which caps it at three hundred thousand dollars and it references in this budget amendment, the federal workers, uh, relief program. So, um, you know, it's, I mean, I think we've covered all our bases on this. I mean, we're, we're just trying to feed people and help people. And, um, it's coming out of the reserves. So we, um, and that three hundred thousand dollars was in the reserve we used last year. We, we didn't use last year when it was five thousand dollars. I mean, we even cut it down from, uh, when me and, uh, and Councilman Hairston bought it the first time, it was five thousand dollar grants. We cut that down to twenty-five hundred, so that we can allow more money. So we don't have, so we didn't have to increase the amount, but we can also help a lot more people if, with, uh, food, um, assistance. So, um, I think everything's been covered in here. Um, you, you're right about the a- account number and that's why I wanted to get, you know, uh, that's what I told him to get with the treasurer to get an account number for, um, both of them. So, um, clerk, could you make sure you add a line seven to the resolution that says, um, this will come from whatever account number that the treasurer gives us? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move on? Okay. Next is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for snow removal services. Are there any questions or comments related to this resolution?
Uh, yes, Mayor.
Councilman Herring?
And this for, uh, Mr. Simpson. I thought you said we had went, we had entered the last year, the contract, of this contract last year.
Yes, sir, uh, Councilman Herring. We did do an RFP in October. Uh, the deadline was, uh, the twenty-ninth. Uh, RH Hilarios-
October what?
Uh, October twenty-ninth was the deadline, um, where we, uh, uh, had received all the bids. RH Hilarios was the only bid. We had sent it out directly to twelve different contractors, as well as posted on our website. Um, and I do believe E Market Place, but I'll have to get that confirmed. Um, and RH Hilarios was the only contractor that did submit their, uh, proposal. We got some feedback from a few companies, um, and they had stated that they typically would like to have the landscaping contract as well. Uh, I can also provide you with a list of the contractors that that RFP, uh, had also been sent out to.
Um, so where, where is the proposal? It's not attached to this resolution.
I will make sure we get sent over to you.
And then, if you could give, give us the proposal, right, I mean, so we can get it with our work package, so we can look it over. 'Cause I don't like getting this, this, and then we get a proposal. Then we're gonna miss something in it because we're trying to address other issues. Right, thank you. Uh, uh, one other question. So how much? How much is it? I mean, you have no dollar amount in this thing.
Well, I know it's a hundred and ten per vehicle, including the salt and hours of operation. I could make sure I send that all to you. It's, it's very similar to the previous, uh, contract that, uh, we did have with it. And as you know, with the snow, it, it can vary, um, some, some, if we have no snow, then it would be nothing. Um, so, uh, I'll definitely send over that information to you. Uh, Brian, I think you were jumping on. You had some comments there too?
Uh, yes, I was just gonna share that after reviewing the previous resolutions that were passed, um, in, in previous terms, uh, the language that was used was, uh, something along the lines of, uh, funding allocated in the, uh, fiscal year budget, since there's a specific line item in the Public Works, uh, budget for snow removal. Um, so that's why there's not a specific dollar amount. Um, I was, we were just trying to keep it consistent with, uh, past year's resolutions.
And I guess my thing is, we need, I mean, I understand we never know what the weather's gonna do, but, I mean, I would like to get an idea about how much we looking at spending, 'cause I know we have a certain dollar amount in there, um, combination of, you know, city money and however user money. But also, this also, and we really need to get in the habit of this. And, uh, um, Councilwoman Cross brought this up, of putting what line item that is coming from. So it should be a number four on here. This should come from line item, whatever, whatever, of the, uh, approved budget. Also, the city manager is hereby authorized to execute a contract. Um, no, you're not. The mayor is authorized to execute a contract. Or the mayor pro temp. Your, uh, line number twenty-eight. You can recommend it, but authorizing it and executing it, that's the signature of the, uh, just like it was before. It was either the president or the, uh, mayor before. This time it's either the mayor or the mayor pro temp. So that language needs to change. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, well, Councilwoman Cross?
Thank you so much. Um, thank you so much, Councilman Herring. You about hit all the points that I was gonna acknowledge, but I also just wanna make sure that the city manager and the assistant city manager understands that there should not be another one of these resolutions that come before this council. And you say, we're gonna send it to y'all. Remember, this is stewardship of the citizens' tax dollars. So when you send a resolution, sir, please attach your contract and attach any documentation necessary for our citizens to get a clear appreciation that due diligence was done with transparency regarding their budget. Thank you so much, uh, Councilman Herring, for all the adequate comments on this resolution. And I, I would hope that we would not get an email, rather, this resolution would be modified and the contract attached and then added back onto our website for the citizens' purview. Thank you so much.
Simpson, you can do that with the public hearing, so to make sure that the, I will make sure that the, um, the resolution is updated and that when it comes to public hearing, when it's publicized, that citizens have the full package. So we'll make sure of that.
And one, I'm, I'm sorry, one last thing, sir. Uh, relative to-
Cross?
Yes, sir, thank you. Relative to, um, the efforts that Public Works is able to support during the winter season, can you add, give us an update on what those efforts look like, um, considering this contract and noting that we will have at least a dollar figure of what this contract looks like? Also noting what you stated, if there are no works done, then there would be no fees charged, please. What work efforts will Public Works have?
Um, as, as Public Works, uh, has supported in years past, uh, they also provide snow removal in conjunction with our contractor. Um, so we will be, uh, or Public Works is expected to continue to also pro- provide the necessary snow removal, uh, whether it's shoveling and/or utilizing, uh, Public Works vehicles, salt spreaders and plows. Uh, I can certainly, uh, provide you with any additional information, uh, relative of that, uh.
Thank you, sir. And I suppose the contract will take into account the works that we do and, um, we would get some type of proration.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, unmute. Thank you. Any other questions or comments as it relates to R dash ten dash twenty-two six, uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Ca- um, Mayor Curtis. I need a, excuse me, I'm sorry. I need clarification here. As far as Public Works and the snow removal, I'm sorry, my phone is going off. Um, they only do, uh, city property. They don't do private property. Am I correct, Mr. Simpson?
Correct.
So that whatever snow removal they'll be doing will be for, uh, city property?
Correct. City property, city street. Are you, are you referring to, I'm sorry, rephrase that question, Public Works?
Public Works.
Yeah, Public Works will definitely, so the approach we've had is sort of working from the inside out. Public Works will be handling like City Hall, uh, those areas, uh, and some of the main thoroughfares along with the contractors we've done years past. Um, but not any personal, uh, property or residence, uh, clearing, uh, just all the main thoroughfares and streets.
Okay, so the, what the, uh, vendor is gonna be doing is gonna, he's gonna be doing, um, ci- city property also, not, um, anything residential. So I don't, I'm not sure that, um, the, there was a mention of prorating the vendor for what the Public Works does. Um, um, the vendor's only gonna be given, the vendor is only gonna be given a cost to what we, uh, specifically asked them to do in, in the contract, as in the past. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, uh, Mayor, one other question, um.
Yes.
Mr. Simpson, have you contracted with the salt house for salt for this coming season?
Sir, we are still, uh, in our year, uh, I think the final year agreement with the state's, uh, salt, uh, domes, uh, located off Cromro.
Have you reached out to him? Have you reached out to him?
Um, not, not as of yet, uh, but I do, did receive some correspondence, just confirming, uh, some of that information. And I do know we are still under contract with them, uh, for this snow season. Uh, we will need to renew that contract, um, I believe, next season.
So for the twenty-five, twenty-six, is it we're co- we're under contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me. All right. We'll be moving on to R eleven dash point twenty six, a resolution authorizing Kohl's Creative Catering Services for the City of Glen Arden's Holiday Party. Any questions or comments related to that? Yes, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Curtis. Um, I'm having a lot of citizens ask me about this uh, Christmas party, or holiday, I'm sorry, holiday party. I don't wanna use the incorrect term. We used this caterer last year. So now we got twelve thousand dollars for decorations and eight thousand dollars for food, which I, I'm not um, on this committee, but I think we're, this is getting a little expensive. We used this caterer last year, which is, they're very good. I enjoyed them. We used the um, the, also the person for the decorations last year. Uh, I think we used them the year before. I think next year for uh, our Christmas, a holiday party, we need to bid these items out because there are vendors in the city that feel like they're being overlooked. Other vendors that watch our meetings that feel like they're being overlooked in being able to participate or to be able to uh, uh, help with uh, our seniors because they know that our community is a senior community and we wanna keep costs down. This, these costs seem to keep going up and up and up. So I think we need to bid these, uh, the caterer and the uh, decorations. There's other uh, persons that can come in and, and also probably show us uh, something um, for these, for the holiday party that would be able to help bring the costs down. We need to start bringing the costs down for these things. I understand that, that, that prices go up and tariffs go up. But uh, one vendor was telling me that when you have a um, somebody come in and do decorations like that, most of the time you buy those, those, those uh, items, and we have those as leftovers that we can use again. Uh, I'm not sure if this is what this person is doing, but I really think that for the decorations and for the uh, the caterer, we need to um, like, do a bid out and find out who else is in the community that would like to serve the City of Glen Arden. And, and make sure that our uh, events are at a reasonable cost. I, I enjoy having the holiday party and for the Thanksgiving party for the citizens. Those things for citizens that we can come together, but we need to start uh, looking at our costs and try to bring our costs down. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Uh, Councilwoman Cross?
I agree with uh, Councilwoman Jones. Thank you. I also acknowledge that um, eighty-eight hundred uh, relative to, um, how many people are we anticipating for the event? Um, I, I believe our number is at, what is it, one eighty or two hundred? Uh, could you clarify?
Two forty.
Oh, two forty. So this, this uh, cost would seem to be adequate. It, it, it says it includes the food, the beverage, and service for the residents. Does that not come with the um, condiments, silverware, and plating and all of that? Because that was the discussion that we had earlier uh, during our special uh, session regarding the very extravagant price for the decorations, madam. Could you clarify? Because it seems like we may have two uh, costs added in here.
Did you not see the invoice?
Well, it's, that's one-
And, and um, the, the um, and part of that, they're not just a ca- a catering, they are actually serving as well. They, they have, they're, they're hired to serve as well. Um, this is not just the uh, preparing the food and, and leaving it. And, and um, the staff or, or City of Glen Arden employees serve it. They are actually um, serving. As far as the um, the paper plates and things like that, um, they're on the invoice with the decorator. And also, um, a lot of the decorating, um, items are purchased as do we have some, um, um, we are purchasing some of the stuff. So, um, we can reuse it. Quite a bit is in storage. I'm quite sure some of you have seen it, um, before it was removed. It was taken up the whole, um, our office. So some of the items are purchased as well.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. I do not see here on your invoice from Kohl's a statement that incorporates these servers. Um, I also do not see a statement that incorporates uh, anything dealing with the utensils or even the service ware. So um, respectfully, under our um, decorations, if we can get the same itemized list so that we can get an appreciation for what that costs. Cause I don't have a problem with the food costs. I'm having a real issue with this being a twenty thousand dollar event for two hundred and forty people. That's really, really extravagant. But in particular, since we own the building. Uh, thank you so much, ma'am.
What did you ask for, um, itemized for the, the plates?
For the decorations, because that came in at a very high cost. Um, and so this, I presume, when I asked that question earlier uh, this evening, that, that when you stated it included the service wares and everything like that, are these people working together? Or are they two separate companies? Because the event management and the decorator um, is putting the tablecloths. So I saw that there was no tablecloths. I see that they're doing the napkins and the plates and all of that as well. So it's, it's really concerning because for plates, an extra plate is eight hundred and twenty dollars. Are these glass porcelain plates? I, I don't know what plates would ever cost us eight hundred and twenty dollars. So I'm, I'm just concerned about the cost, particularly on the twelve thousand five hundred that is affiliated with this same event. One held in a specially uh, session, and now one held here in discussion uh, during our, our regular council work session. Um, as to not see that this total event is twenty thousand dollars for two hundred and forty people. But thank you so much, ma'am.
Oh, Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, Councilman Harry?
Yes, cause I'm looking at the invoice for the decorator, and I see they have the tablecloths, thirty tablecloths. Um, then they had a food tablecloths. And I, of course, and I know y'all saw the napkins, the plates and utensils. So all of that is on the decorator's um, invoices. So I see that, but I just wanna remind people that um, last year's event was actually paid by Park, Parkland Recreation, because we had a grant that covered the cost of that. And we were approved again this year for grant money. So I'm hoping that it will be covered, you know, as long as we pr- uh, provide all of um, adequate uh, invoices and everything. It would be covered again this year by that same grant, because we were approved again for a hundred thousand dollars. And um, you know, I'm look, I'm looking at it covering most of the events that the council has, you know, um, the expoundment, uh, Thanksgiving, this event, Glen Arden Day, um, so, um, you know, I think we should be okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Yes, um, thank you, Council, uh, Councilman Herring. Um, and I would add that, um, since we've been having uh, this decorator and we can, you know, revisit uh, moving forward. But um, still, I mean, when I see people in summertime or whatever, they are really pleased and um, with the change. They like the games that the, that the decorator, uh, she, you know, does five games and, and, and things like that. So she's, she's serving as well in, in the um, the event. And um, I've had just rave reviews of um, you know, people, yeah, our citizens looking, you know, saying, I can't wait till, you know, what's gonna, what has gonna look this year. So while, I mean, you know, it is, it is a lot, uh, and, and has um, gone up a lot. But um, like I said, um, uh, like you mentioned, um, Councilwoman Cross, you did not see plates and um, tablecloth, even the uh, the decorator, she's, she's um, doing the tablecloth for the caterer, I mean, for the, for the caterer. So um, all of this included, again, like I said, a lot of the items are gonna be um, uh, you know, mought. And we do have some of the tables this year, which is something new that um, there'll be some um, uh, mixed centerpieces, one of the centerpiece, uh, one, uh, fifteen of tables will have live, um, uh, plants, so that um, they can be given to our citizens as well. So, um, again, um, like Councilman Harris said, that, you know, we probably wouldn't even have to come out of our, our budget because of the grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Curtis. Uh, now, there is a mention of a grant. I have not seen any paperwork concerning this grant. I would like to be able to read what this grant entails. I have asked for it and I have not received it. I, I'm going online publicly saying, whoever has the information concerning the grant, would you please distribute it to all of the council members? So that we be, we would be able to familiarize ourselves with it when citizens ask us questions concerning it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Yes, um, Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, Councilman Harry?
Um, yeah, and, and Councilwoman Jones is right. She should um, get that. So I'm gonna ask um, Charles and them to send the paperwork, uh, because we have, we have to submit everything to the county. Um, so Parks and Recreation, so yeah, it's called a project charge grant. And they usually have all the write-up and everything, and they, they should have all of that for you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Well, are there no more comments? Rep. Ferguson, do you have one last comment?
I just wanted to add that, um, the cost for the um, the party last year was also covered by that. So again, um, I, it isn't as extravagant, but it, it was covered by a grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll take the next three. Um, the next three are-
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Curtis. I had one more question I'm, I meant to ask concerning the uh, holiday party. Okay, so it's twenty thousand dollars. Does this include the DJ?
No, it does not.
Oh, so we have to spend another fifteen hundred, maybe two thousand for DJ?
We don't, no, DJ is not two thousand. Usually it's like five hundred or something like that. There is a thirty thousand dollar budget approved in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments on this particular legislation or move on? Okay. The next three legislations uh, are twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. All three are resolutions appoint, making appointments to the Ethics Board. Uh, one is for David Lewis, one is for Andrew Bounce, and the other one is for Ms. Wanda Gibson. Are there any comments or questions related to those resolutions? Um, yes, Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was looking at the attached packages um, to the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with the, I guess, the different um, resolutions uh, that were put in place concerning chapter sixteen. And um, I sponsored a resolution in twenty twenty-three. Um, ordinance zero three, twenty twenty-four, an emergency ordinance to amend Charter sixteen ethics in order to comply with the state mandated changes. So that um, should be added to, um, that's the uh, most current um, amendment, um, as it pertains to, I mean, this was a state ordered amendment. So um, that needs to be. So it's uh, ordinance zero three, twenty twenty-four.
South Clerk, please, um, pull that and make sure that it's referenced.
And it can be found on the um, website.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Ferguson. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, uh, Mayor. I just, I, I emailed, I should have went out to the full council to ask them if they have anybody that one, would like to serve on a committee, because right now, I'm hoping, it's, it's like it's getting stacked. So I'm just thinking that, that, especially the Ethics Committee should be from, uh, people from across the community, um, from all the, all wards. Um, and, you know, we had an issue with that when uh, Councilman McCross was mayor, that we wanted to make sure that they all didn't come from one ward. And I'm, I'm, I want the same thing, the same thing here. And I think that an email should have went out to the council asking if they knew anybody that wanted to serve. So that's just my argument. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And definitely welcome uh, any recommendations. I will say that, uh, I think uh, I believe that all of the terms expire on Ethics Board, but according to how things are written. I know the last one, last individual those um, appointed was Ms. White. Yvonne White, she's from Ward Two. Uh, so she wishes to stay on. She can stay on from Ward Two. Uh, Ms. Wanda Gibson is from Ward One. Uh, uh, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Bounce are from Ward Three. Uh, that will leave another, um, one, two, three, four, one more position open. Uh, I share your um, desire, Councilman Herring, so that is um, diverse and not all stacked from one uh, ward. Um, and so if you have anyone, please, you know, you know, put them forward. Um, and are there any other questions or comments related to these three? Councilwoman Cross?
Thank you so much. Um, you did have an appointment of Yvonne White, which was Resolution forty-eight, twenty twenty-two. But you also had an appointment of Mr. Paul Michael Braxton, uh, who is a Ward Three member, which is Resolution R forty-seven dash twenty twenty-two. So both uh, Ms. White and Mr. Braxton are essentially under the same timeline. If he wishes to extend, he should be made equally the same option, which then would give you um, a majority members out of Ward Three, which answers uh, Councilman Herring's concern. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you said Braxton was from what ward?
Ward Three, Woodmore Townsend.
Yeah, um, so we'll, we'll reach out. I, was Mr. Braxton voted on? That was, you said it was twenty twenty-two?
Yes, of course. He was. And um, he was um, signed. Uh, there were two abstentions, but um, signed by Councilwoman Jones, Councilwoman Guillaume, Councilwoman Freey, and uh, Council Vice President Ferguson then, and yourself, Council President Curtis. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So we still welcome um, any recommendations. As I stated, Ms. White's and as Councilman Cross stated, uh, Mr. Braxton's term has expired. Um, if there are no appointments, fine. If there aren't, uh, then we could certainly reach out to um, those individuals whose terms have expired to see if they want to stay on. Um, so with that, we'll move on to the next three resolutions. Um, Resolutions fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Uh, which are for the Glen Arden Housing Authority. Uh, one is for Ms. Arlene Lewis, another one for Anthony Foster, and another one for Ms. Wanda Gibson. Are there any questions or comments relating to that?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Harry.
Same thing with this one, and I'm not sure what the makeup is of the um, Glen Arden Housing Authority now, who's on there and uh, what wards they come from. I think it should be, again, even from across the uh, community also, um, and I've mentioned this previously, that they need, that the, the Housing Authority needs to be set up as, is mandated by state law, which requires that they, that one person's- Housing Authority needs to be set up as is mandated by state law, which requires that they, that one person staggers off each year. So we need to make, we get everybody on there to um see where they are, and they have to be staggered off, because you should be appointing somebody every year um to keep the rotation going on. Um but again, and I have a very big part of it, once again, Ms. Gibson being on both the Ethics and Housing, that's not a good, that's not a good thing to have. Either she's gonna be on Ethics or she's gonna be on Housing. Because if she's on Ethics and something comes before her from Housing, how is she gonna be able to objectively um listen to whatever comes before? To, if you're on Ethics Committee, you should be on no other committee, because you don't ever know who's gonna come before you and with a complaint. It could be somebody from Housing, it could be from somebody from um the Housing Authority or whatever. But that 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 person should not be on both. If she's gonna be on Ethics, she should not be on anything else. That's a very important position, and and you have to serve in that position objectively. And I don't see how you'd be objective if you're sitting on another committee that may come before you. So um those are my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Cross.
Thank you. Now, uh Councilman Herring adequately stated um exactly what I wanted to say in this. Um having served on the Ethics Board myself for the City of Glen Arden, it, I was not allowed to serve in any other capacity because of the objectivity that is required for that particular mission. So I equally agree with Councilman Herring's statements. Thank you. Having served the position.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
I see your hand. Mayor Proton Ferguson.
With that said, I do agree with um Councilman Herring as well. So would you be uh reaching out to Ms. Gibson to see?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, probably reaching out to Ms. Gibson uh to see which one she would want to stay on for. Um and then we'll see to quarterly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, that's it for the legislative portion of the agenda. Um are there any immediate questions or comments related to any of the city reports?
I just have one, and and he uh I know we talked about snow, and I just wanna know if um Mrs. if Mrs. Senter can send the council the salt contract? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Curtis. I have a question concerning the Police Department report. If um whoever their representative is or Chief Bryant is on.
Uh let me see. Uh yes, Chief, Chief is here.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief Bryant. How are you, sir?
I'm well.
I just have one question concerning your report uh for reports and incidences and for from September to October twentieth. It's only showing three uh reports and incidences. How many um service calls did you all receive during that time?
Uh we got, I think we got like um, I think like six hundred and something calls for service. But um, yeah, we just, I just put the um significant reports on there.
Okay, cuz oh, I'm sorry, it's only two. One for September the twenty-sixth and then October the tenth.
Yeah, I put the significant reports on there that um that will reflect on the UCR report.
Okay. All right, that's all I needed to know. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. No other questions relating to the administrative reports? I see none. Okay, uh then we'll move on to topics of discussion. We'll go on to um the added ones, so we won't forget them. So we'll start with Johnson Ave and Fisk Ave.
Okay. Um I had a citizen call me concerning the speed bumps. Uh because they're requesting a speed bump in their area, and I couldn't tell him what the criteria was for how the speed bumps were um placed. So I kinda rode around and looked to see where the, I'm sorry, the temporary speed bumps uh uh were. And I saw one in like the seventy-nine hundred block of Johnson Avenue that that's on the side before you cross over Glen Arden Parkway. And then there's another one when you cross over Glen Arden Parkway in seventy-nine hundred block. And then there's another temporary speed bump like at seventy-eight fifteen Johnson Avenue. And then there's no more. So to me, I mean, I know that they're temporary, but there's just no rhyme or reason as to uh how they're placed. And because this citizen lives in the seventy-eight hundred block of Johnson Avenue, and they wanted, they wanted a speed bump uh closer in in that not only at seventy-eight fifteen, but like one down at like around seventy, seventy-eight oh five. Yeah, a temporary, because he's, uh they're saying that there's a lot of speeding going on. He has reached out to our uh Glen Arden Police Department, and Glen Arden Police Department uh asked him to check with one of his council members to see, you know, what the criteria is and how they were pla, how they're being placed. So if there's a possibility to put another speed bump somewhere between seventy-eight fifteen and seventy-eight oh five Johnson Avenue, right before you get to Tyler Street, uh I would appreciate that to uh maybe uh address the issue that he seems to be, that they seem to think that they're having down there. And another thing is, when I was down there uh looking around, I noticed um the alleyways. I'm looking at the alleyways, and um the alleyway in the seventy-eight hundred block of 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 uh between Johnson Avenue and Fisk Avenue is is, looks pretty good. I'm not sure how many times Public Works goes down there to address the grass and to make sure that the um on on city property, if the the um trees are still trimmed back or what. But we invested a lot of money to clean that alleyway up because citizens wanted that alleyway cleaned up because of different uh bugs. I'm looking at the seventy-nine hundred block of Johnson Avenue, Fisk Avenue, alleyway, and I'm seeing that uh it looks like someone is starting to put out uh different things. I took pictures of uh, it looks like a a small swimming pool and some wood stuff. Um and then that the other a- area, there was a lot of uh uh tree stumps and branches. I don't know where those things came from, because I know that Mack and Son, I I really pushed to have that cleaned, and I know Mack and Son, but you know, cleaned all of that out. Um moving forward, I think what we need to, as a, as a resolution to that, I'm not sure who put it out there, but if it's behind a citizen's home, I would assume, I would assume that maybe this citizen uh put this out there. But uh we have no proof unless somebody has a camera with with pictures. But um moving forward, uh I would ask that Mr. um Sean Nichols, who's our Public Works Director, go down there and check that out. Uh maybe take the code enforcer down there with him. I s- I've cited, I have several uh places in the charter, in the code where uh dumping and uh, well, they do have a sign down there that says dumping is a thousand dollar fine. But dumping and um uh creating a public nuisance is in our code. So code enforcement and Mr. Nichols can go down there and and look at it and see where we are. My other recommendation would be that code enforcement come up with some kind of flyer for that Johnson Avenue, Fisk Avenue alleyway to let citizens know that they can, that we didn't clean that up for them to dump, redump stuff down there. It costs, like I said, the investment was a lot for us to get that cleaned up, for citizens to enjoy their uh outdoor spaces. We did not clean that up for citizens to make an additional uh space to their property. So they need to know that where their property line is, that's where they need to stay, because that is city property, and we are trying to keep that uh 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 addressed appropriately so that uh it will look nice. Um like I said, I don't know who put the 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 tree stumps and the tree branches and stuff that's out there behind this one particular home. I don't know who put that out there. I I I would assume that uh somebody couldn't just take a truck and drive back there and put that back there, but I, we don't know. And until they go down there and look at that and find out, you know, address that situation, I'm still uh 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 Mr. Green is very big on uh education. I think that we need to educate these citizens and let them know that the codes in the city uh that when you do dumping, the fine is a thousand dollars. The signs are up there. Maybe we need to put, may maybe put some signs in the alley to let them know that, you know, there could be new citizens that have moved into the area and are not aware of these codes. But uh citizens need to know, we invested a lot of money as a city to clean that alleyway up so that citizens can enjoy their homes uh uh as much as possible without rodents and insects. And for you to come down there and start putting stuff down, back down in there, there's, like I said, there's a sign up that says dumping is a thousand dollars. And uh a- after Mr. Green educates, then we should start fining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, I I wanna follow up on what uh Councilwoman Jones said. I'm glad she brought that up, because that stuff has been in the alley for a while. And um I didn't say anything about it, cuz I'm thinking, you know, they're gonna get it, because they're cutting the grass and doing everything else, and they're riding through the community that they would see it. But it should not be sitting down there as long as it's been sitting down there. And um she's right, you know, we spent, I mean, she, you know, that was a project that she pushed, and it's been, everybody com- complimented us on what 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 was done. So um I'm not sure why it's been sitting down there for so long, but it has been down there for a bit. Cuz it's like three houses down from mine, so, or two houses down from the other one. So um yeah, I'm not sure what's what's what, because again, I mean, if they're out and about, and they're tooling around, and they're doing cleaning up, like they're supposed to clean up, that's something. I mean, it isn't like it's small. It's a big, it's a big pile. You can tell it's sitting, it's right in the middle of the alley. You know, so, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Um Mr. Nichols, did you have a comment as relates to that?
Uh yes, good evening, everyone. Um I I just wanted to ask as a point of clarification, approximately how long uh has this trash been piling up?
I can say it's been there over a month.
Okay, so, okay, o- over a month. So tha- thank you for bringing this to my attention um now. Um I'll make sure that we go look at it immediately uh tomorrow so that we can address it. Um I can say I have not seen anything that has lingered for a month. Um I've been here now for approximately a month, but thank you for bringing it to my attention now.
So let me say this, so we can be quite clear. So you know, I live here, and it's right between, I got two houses on this block, and it's right between both houses, and I had a complaint, I sent a letter in already about a situation, and that was about three weeks ago. So it's been over a month, and if you did not see it, then maybe you need to ride around a little bit more around the neighborhood, cuz it's been out there. And I tell you, it's been over a month because it's dry as I don't know what, so it's dried out. So it's been out there for over a month. And because you didn't see it, doesn't mean it hasn't been out there over a month. And it's between, like I said, again, my house is at had two houses, one at either end of this, of that alley, and it's in between both of them. So
I I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
Mr. Nichols, Mr. Nichols, you have to, you have to wait uh to be addressed by the chair, cuz Councilman Herring was still talking. So to avoid people over talking to each other, the proper protocol is just address the chair, uh but wait till, you know, the members finish speaking. Um uh Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry, but the pictures that I have shows that this debris is directly behind someone's home. So I uh I can, I will put together a follow-up email and send the pictures along with this to the um Public Works, the city manager, and to the council, so that they can see uh exactly what I'm talking about. So this is directly behind somebody's house. So uh, like I said, I'm not sure if the 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 resident uh put the uh, put it out there, or if how he got out there. But um moving, like I said, my recommendation moving forward is that, once again, uh maybe Public Works will just, I mean, once he addresses it, assesses it, he may determine that we may just go ahead and clean it up this time, but after this, all that, all that debris, somebody put that back there. And it needs to be addressed. And citizens need to know, we did not invest that kind of money, because other, to have them re uh throw debris and stuff out there. That's city property. You cannot, you, if you, if you hire somebody to come and do something for your home, they should have enough money uh set aside for them to also do the trash removal. Or uh or or this, in this case, all these stumps and and uh branches, uh that removal. It should not be uh put in the, in an area, a a city area, where as these citizens know, we just cleaned that up. You know, unless it's a new citizen. We just cleaned that up, maybe a a year or two ago. And it should not be looking, it should not look like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Herring.
And Councilwoman Jones, just to follow up on what you said, I actually sent them the pictures about a week or so ago. So it's not like they don't have them. Um so they they, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, they they know it's out there, it's just, it's been sitting, you're right, it's a lot of stuff, and I think it actually came off one neighbor's house up there. I think they threw it over the fence, you know, when they did some work up there. But again, they do have pictures. I sent them pictures of it, of what was in that alley. So they have them. They just haven't moved forward to do anything about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Yes, thank you. I I just wanted to thank Councilman Jones um for uh bringing it to my attention. I'll make sure to jump on it um tomorrow. And I would just ask that um if anybody sees anything, if you could assist, uh you know, and just help in the community uh by letting me know, I'll make sure my team immediately jumps on it. Um we do a great job in going throughout and working throughout the city every single day. Uh but as a community, if everybody can, you know, you see something, say something, we'll make sure to jump right on it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, next is the American Legion, Councilman McCross. Councilman McCross?
Yes, thank you so much. Um I wanted to address um a concern that was brought to me by the President of the American Legion Auxiliary, actually. And the Auxiliary had inquired about a program for next year, April the eleventh or eighteenth of April. Time would be eleven AM to three PM. The intent would be a gospel brunch themed to give them their roses now to honor the Glen Arden Auxiliary members who have demonstrated outstanding dedication and commitment in support of our veterans. Now, the concern is, um there was a message and communication, I believe, through the channels of perhaps our clerk and into the channels of our um Gold Room manager. And uh the resolution that came out of that was one that was not necessarily in line with our works that we have done in the past. And I note that Resolution thirty-three twenty twenty, uh which was then sponsored by Councilman Herring and co-sponsored by uh then Vice President of the Council, Celestine Wilson uh during a public hearing November nineteenth of twenty nineteen, which afforded the American Legion Auxiliary Unit two seventy-five, who is a five oh one C three recognized organization within the City of Glen Arden. They have historically uh committed themselves to demonstrate not only their support for our children and families of Glen Arden, but as well as our seniors, and is an extremely important part of our veterans' family and the Veterans Day, and as well as, you know, other honorable days that we as City of Glen Arden depend on them to hold programming. Uh this unit is and has been granted, again, under that Resolution R thirty-three twenty twenty, use of the Gold Room for one event per year. Uh this would be their event. So I would like for the council just to acknowledge, there is an email sent to you uh which covers this correspondence in full, but I wanted to just bring it before the council uh so that we can uh get a resolution uh put together to adequately support them as a five oh one C three authorized in the City of Glen Arden. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Yes, I did see the um the email. Um and I spoke to Ms. Bun a couple, a few weeks ago, uh cuz she uh was confirming to me uh the dates that they wanted, uh that uh that they said they chose. They do um have been granted a gua- a goddess uh date, and usually they'll use it. However, the goddess um days are weekdays. They're asking for a Saturday. And so um that is where the uh problem lies. They they uh, cuz I I read the email, and it was email and it was saying that they, you know, they were denied, but they, they were denied the use of the weekend. But they, uh, their, their, uh, gratis day still stands, um, Monday through, I think it's Thursday. So, um, so you're asking to go beyond the gold room rules? Councilwoman Cross?
Thank you, ma'am. Now, this is stated in writing in the gold room rules. If we can just pull that section out and reply back all that way, the organization is made alert of any changes that may, um, impede their abilities to actually, uh, utilize the room. Uh, no, we're not gonna go against the rules that have been so extensively debated in the past. But what we do want to do is rather than say they can't, just copy back the rule of our organization so that they can read it for themselves and, um, be able to effectively plan forward in the future. But we, just so that I'm clear, we did not deny them their gratis opportunity. We just are asking them to consider an alternative day based on the rules of the gold room.
Yes, before, um, I did, um, when I saw the email today, I did, uh, call, uh, Ms. Bond just to confirm, um, from our conversation, which was weeks ago. Did she, you know, um, she went back and, and, and talked to them. She said she had talked to Ms. Walters, um, and she read them, the, uh, read her, what was in the gold room, uh, rules and she said that, um, Ms. Walters said, um, she understood them, but she was going to come to the council anyway. So that's what, um, Ms. Bond said. So basically, um, and this is something that, I mean, they, they, um, they, they have their, uh, events. It's not anything new. They know that they have a gratis day and they know that it's always on the weekdays, just like Senator Benson have hers every year. She know, you know, she either have it on Wednesday or Thursday. They, they know, uh, the tracking. They know that it's, you know, it's on the weekdays because, uh, the Saturday is a premium, you know, that's where, you know, uh, you know, they go and makes, you know, a large amount, large amount of money on those days. So, um, they do know, but, um, she just, you know, they just wanted to, to, uh, ask again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Proton Ferguson. Any other comments?
Uh, just one, sir.
Yes, Councilwoman Cross?
Uh, if we could, just, um, get Ms. Bond just to pull that snippet out and just send us all back a reply, then that way, um, you know, we're all privy to kind of the discussions that happen uh, relative to this and we can all move forward under the same page and understanding. Thank you so much. But I just made, I was just made aware today, uh, that there had been a problem or a concern or even an inquiry. So if we could, just reply with the snippet of the new gold room guidance and direction that prevents the Saturday from happening. And I know it's a bit out, April of 2026, but noting that if there isn't an event, which, you know, we hopefully will doubt it because as you stated, those are big moneymaker days, that perhaps we could give them a notification that we could have the event on that Saturday if it's not something already scheduled. But that's just a consideration for the future. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Next topic, uh, property owned by Dennis Smith. Councilman Williams? Councilman Williams, are you there? Okay. Well, the next day up for council. Um, all right, well, we'll move forward then to, uh, council rules. Councilmember Herring?
Yeah, um, I had, um, you know, we last went over the council rules, we're back in 2021. And I just wanted to give them to all the council members and say we need to look them over again so that they're in line with the new form of government because they're still, they're still, um, you know, stating president, vice president and all of that other stuff, a mayor and all this other stuff. So we need to, uh, revisit, revisit those. So, I mean, we don't have to do it tonight, but I just wanted to put on everybody's radar and give them a copy of them so we can try to, um, maybe at the next work session we can work on. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, so Councilmember Williams, are you there? Councilmember Williams, uh, we're on the topic of property owned by, uh, former mayor Dennis Smith. Yeah, you're on mute.
I just wanted to follow up where we are with that so we won't drop the ball with administration.
Yeah, I'll let, uh, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Wood jump in. The, as of the last meeting, I know that, um, we have bids out, I believe, to do the valuation, uh, on the property. But Mr. Simpson, Mr. Wood, any update? Either one. Mr. Wood, if you want to go, you can go ahead. All right, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, yeah, just update. Um, so the RFP will be closing, um, I believe next week, um, and then we will, uh, be reviewing, uh, scoring, uh, the responses and bringing forth a recommendation, um, to the council, um, based off of those responses, um, about the evaluation, next steps, cost, um, so forth and so on. Uh, those will be, will be brought before council and then, um, based on council's decision, we'll, uh, take the next steps.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. And just for clarity, Mr. Wood, the next steps will be the selection of the vendor and then it'll be the valuation of the, the, the property. And then once the properties are evaluated, um, then that will be brought back to the, the council. And then people will be able to purchase, make a, uh, request to purchase the property. Oh, or did I have that?
Um, oh, yes, all the way until that last, uh, part of the evaluation, uh, will, you know, as, as many council, uh, wishes to move forward with the valuation, uh, that final report, um, as well as a, um, virtual meeting with, um, the selected company, um, as, as part of the RFP, um, would be, uh, had with council. Um, and then based on that report, if council wishes to identify some, all, none of the properties that they wish to sell, um, or make available, um, for potential selling, then, then that would be, um, an additional step. But the RFP would be specifically for the, uh, evaluation, um, for our edification.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. All right. Next topic is file cabinet storage for council members. Uh, Councilman Williams?
Yes. I think we need to either identify some storage spaces because we have a lot of paper. I do not intend to keep stacking this up in my house. So I'd like to have storage in the council room or cabinet set aside for us and purchase a lock that we can store our stuff, our paperwork that we have.
Are there any other comments on this topic? Or questions?
Yeah, ma'am. This file cabinet, this file cabinet's in there already. He's got to clean them out.
Yes, this file cabinet's in there, but it's not been dedicated to council members. So that's why I want the body to, or the, the, the mayor to identify file space that is not enough, then order some cabinets. But at least identify so at least this council member can have a drawer or two for filing all the paperwork we get each month. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Curtis. Um, there is a black file cabinet sitting close to the, um, desk where the desktop is that the council uses, uh, that it has, was bought for just that purpose. Uh, there are in there, in, in there right now, um, some old files from 2020, 2022 that the council clerk had. I don't know if they need to be sent to, uh, Iron Mountain or if they need to be, uh, somehow, uh, gone through and, and, and and I guess take out the important documents or whatever, but they, it's, it's all stuff from our former council clerk sheet that, um, she had. And, and two of those drawers, I think at the, the one at the bottom, it has a key, a, a keyboard in it from a, a, a a computer and the other one I don't think has anything in it. So, uh, if the council member wanted to use those, uh, that file cabinet is open, but that file, that whole black file cabinet was bought for this, just that purpose for council persons that wanted to, um, uh, have things put in a, a, in a file cabinet or stored in the, uh, council chambers. And I can come up there and look through some of it, make sure, clean out one of those, make sure that that one at the bottom is all cleaned out and the next one up, but um, that file cabinet is there for that purpose. Thank you, uh, Mayor Curtis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. And Council Clerk, if you can put that on your list thing to do to just check the, the cabinets we have in there so we can make some space uh, for council members who would like to store things in the office, that would be great. Uh, Mr. Williams, you're up again with jackets for council members.
We were asked some three months ago to come down and, um, get fitted for, uh, jackets for the winters for things to go on. We have the shirts. Um, where are we with that now? I, I went down to the police and fitted one of the jackets and that was back in, uh, July. And there's still no jackets. So where are we with that?
Council Clerk, where are we with the jackets?
I'm having some trouble in the meeting. Um, I actually wasn't in on that conversation about the jacket, so I'm not sure. I just know what Mr. Uh, Councilman Williams said that there were some fittings, but that's all I know.
Would you, um, uh, who? We went downstairs, is it, was it with? Uh, Councilmember Williams, was it with the chief?
Me? When we went over the shirts, um, sizes for the shirts, polo shirts and, and dress shirts. And then, uh, Mayor Proton, um, Ferguson stipulated about getting jackets. So he said there were some extra jackets down in in the council chamber to go down and get fitted. So that's what I did. And then nothing came after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Has any other council member been fitted for a jacket? I have all councilors in fit for a jacket. Anyone who hasn't, I should say, that's probably best question.
I have not.
Me neither.
I have not.
Okay.
I really thought that it was told that the jacket would be, um, brought upstairs. I think the director was given to, uh, to the manager Simpson.
Mr. Simpson, could you please, um, thank Councilman Harrison. Mr. Simpson, could you, uh, just bring some samples up to the office so that remaining council members can be, um, fitted for jackets and then we can move this forward, please?
These were jackets that, um, might have been in the last administration that, uh, the chief Brian had, uh, brought up, uh, to show us, uh, the ones that they were getting, uh, I mean, like they had. So it's going to be basically, I think it's, uh, weatherproof or, I mean, yeah, um, that we would get and just have them, um, customized for the council.
Yeah, Chief?
Uh, yes, um, those jackets, we've got, um, they were samples that we brought from the store, but we had to take them back. Um, I'll just have Lieutenant go over tomorrow and grab some samples and bring them over. And, um, different sizes and, uh, different styles and, um, have them give to, um, the city manager for a couple of days. So, um, the council can be fitted for them. Um, once you fit it, you can write down, um, the model and size and we get it, um, we get that back to the city manager so he can place the order for you guys.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments? I don't think I missed any additional topics. So with that, um, the only remaining item is us to adjourn to a closed session. Uh, council reserves the right to go into a closed session anytime during a public meeting uh, pursuant to the Anticipated Code of Maryland, State Government Article Section 10 dash 508A. The council by majority vote may retire to executive or closed session at any time during the meeting. So the council retired to executive or closed session, the chair will announce the reason and report will be issued at a future meeting disclosing the reasons for such closed session. Uh, today, uh, I am proposing that we go into closed session to discuss a sensitive personnel, uh, matter. Uh, with that, uh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones?
I just have one thing that I wanted to say, uh, or let the citizens know and let the, uh, the, the, uh, council also know. We have a new business coming into the City of Glen Arden. It's a black-owned business. It's called Winning Taste. It's right next to the barber shop up on Johnson Avenue. And they're going to have a, from 10 to two friends and family, uh, come out and, and, and know who they are or get familiar with who they are. Um, I just wanted the, 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 the the council to be aware of that so we could probably during the, um, what do you call it? The event that we're having this weekend, uh, the, uh, shred day and, uh, clothing event that we could, uh, kind of go over there and, uh, greet them and welcome them to the city and, uh, enjoy some of their, uh, delectable delights to see if they're, you know, if there'd be, uh, to, uh, help, uh, them come into the city. So it's called Winning Taste. The, the chef is a, a gentleman I met today, Mr. Arthur. He's a black guy and, um, he's looking forward to serving the city and the citizens of the City of Glen Arden. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cross?
I'd like to add to the closed session, uh, feedback on the attorney, uh, as it pertains to the red speed contract issue.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, I just want to, um, follow up with, um, something that Ms. Jones said. Just let everybody know, we will be having shred day this Saturday, nine to 12. And you also, we also have a donation drive. So, you know, come on out, um, nine to 12, uh, Saturday, uh, November 8th. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anything particular from donation drive?
I think smaller classes, clothes, um, really that's about clothes, smaller classes, um, make sure you have it bagged up. Really, and they take most of anything, really.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Second.
So moved by, uh, Councilman Jones, second by Councilman McCross. Uh, any further discussion? Council Clerk, could you do a, a roll call for, uh, adjournment to closed session, please? Hey, Council clerk, could you do a, a roll call for uh adjournment to closed session, please? I'll do the roll call. Uh, Councilman McCross?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Williams? Councilman Williams?
I said yes.
Oh, we didn't hear it. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Yeah.
And Mayor Curtis is yes. Uh, this concludes the open portion of our meeting. Our next meeting uh will be held on next Wednesday November the twelfth as our regularly scheduled public hearing on November eleventh falls on a federal holiday, so our public hearing will be on November twelfth, Wednesday. Okay? Thank you. Uh, the open portion of this meeting is now closed. Uh, Mr. Gray?